Monday, September fourteenth, um, uh, we don't have to- do I have to announce, I think? I don't have to announce the protocols, right? Um, so we'll just go right to the pledge?
Yes.
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, and now item number three is the minutes- to consider an act upon the minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay.
It's important.
All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Uh, item number four is for information purposes only, uh, resignations from the Shellfish Commission, Eric Johnson, um, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, uh, Edward Lane, and the Park and Rec Commission, Caitlin Schmidt. Um, I want to just thank them publicly all for serving our community. Item number five, appointments, to hear and consider an act upon the following appointments. Uh, I- A, uh, Historic Commission, which requires RTM approval, Dr. Darren Ryman Locke, of Stillson Road, uh, the term eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-four, alternate to fill a vacancy open since November of two thousand nineteen, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second it, Nancy.
Is there any discussion on this item?
I'd just like to thank the doctor for his willingness to serve in this position.
It's a she.
Um, geez.
It's okay. Is- is- is Dr. Ryman Locke on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Oh, hi, well, welcome.
My- my apologies, doctor.
(laugh) It happens all the time.
I was gonna say, it's a unique way to spell the first name.
(laugh) I have my parents to thank for that.
There you go.
Uh, uh, does anyone have any questions for the- for doc- for the doctor, any? Or any comments?
Thank you for stepping in.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Well, I would just personally, uh, this is, uh, Brenda, I just wanna say thank you very much for stepping up. Uh, you're the chairman, thinks very highly of you. And, uh, thinks that you'll, uh, do a great job on the Historic Commission.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
And- and I wanna actually highlight what the first elect woman has just said, that, um, the chairman of this committee, and- and it goes for others, they work so intimately and closely, and I know this is one approval that requires, um, the RTM approval as well, and so I just wanna say for- for that body, that, you know, at least for me, it's very important that, um, when a commissioner and a- and a board chair speaks so highly of someone, that that really counts for a lot, so, um, I just wanted to say that that's something that should absolutely go into when we make a decision, um, because they have intimate knowledge of working with this board, so, and that's the case here. So I just wanted to say thank you for stepping in, but also glad to know that, um, you come so highly recommended.
Thank you, that's a great compliment to me.
Well, if we have no other comments, um, a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, congratulations and thank you again so much for- for- for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
We're going to item, uh, B, um, Park and Rec Commission, uh, Richard O'Connor of Lowly Street, for the term eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-four, to fill the vacancy of Caitlin Schmidt, who resigned. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion, uh, Mr. Dylan, uh, Mr. O'Connor, are you on the phone?
Hi Brenda, I'm here.
(laugh) Hey, how are ya?
I bet you didn't know I was Richard.
I know, I was caught off guard by the Richard, I was like, who's that?
I know, who's Richard O'Connor? That's my dad. It's my dad and me.
(laugh) Well, um, so Di- Dylan, Richard, uh, used to be a camp counselor for the Park and Rec program, uh, for our town, and actually was my son's camp counselor.
Yep.
Right there he deserves a medal.
Long time ago.
(laugh)
Sounds like fine training for the Park and Rec Commission.
(laugh) Absolutely. Uh, any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for stepping in.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you. Happy to do it, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you as well, there's, uh, a lot that goes on with the Park and Rec Commission. It's a- a very important board in town, um, from its oversight of all the programs and all the funding that comes in for those programs, as well as the marina and all that goes on there, and working very closely with the schools, so, uh, thank you so much.
My pleasure, I'm happy for the opportunity. I have three kids in schools and, uh, I- I grew up in town, so, uh, it's a perfect opportunity for me to help the town out.
Great.
Well, we really appreciate you stepping up, and, uh, we look forward to having you serve on this im- in this important role. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, my pleasure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Mr. Co- O'Connor. How formal.
I know.
(laugh) Okay, congratulations Dylan.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Uh, item number C, Shellfish Commission, uh, Todd, uh, Knechtie, Knechtie, uh, Green Knolls Lane, um, Ca- oh, Kanekey, uh, to fill the vacancy for Eric Johnson, who resigned. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or, uh, comments? Todd, are you on the line? Okay. Any comments?
(laugh) Just, uh, thank him for his service on this commission. Uh, it's always a gripping budget discussion when we come to the Shellfish Commission, so...
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number D, Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, which requires RTM approval, Timothy Bezler, um, of Glengarry Road, term from eleven eighteen to eleven twenty-two, to fill the vacancy of Dabney Bowen, who resigned to serve on another board. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Seconded.
Um, Mr. Bezler, are you on the line?
I am.
Well, welcome, and, uh-
Can you hear me?
Let me be the- yes, let me be the first to thank you very much for stepping up to serve on this commission. It is a very important commission, um, and believe it or not, there's a- there's a quite a bit of information, and it's a- it's a very, um, integral part of our town, so, thank you very much for stepping up.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. I know there's a lot going on about, uh, with the solid waste and recycling in the state, and I'm looking forward to helping out.
Yes, there is. It's very complicated and concerning for sure.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Brenda said, this is, uh, a- a very complicated, uh, situation, and appreciate your willingness to serve on this commission.
Well, thank you, I'm looking forward to help out.
And I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously, and thank you again, um, for stepping up to serve our community, we do appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, you take care. Item number six, uh, Engineering Manager requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Engineering Manager. Resolved that the first elect woman, Brenda Cupchik, be and hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a twenty twenty Connecticut steep grant for up to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars for Fairfield Center pedestrian improvements. Further resolved, that first elect woman, Brenda Cupchik, is hereby authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents necessary to obtain said twenty twenty steep grant with the state of Connecticut. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
And I'll second it.
And Mr. Hurley is on the line, so we'll open it up for questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hurley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Flynn.
Hey, um, if my colleagues don't mind, I have a few questions on that.
Sure.
Is that, uh, Nancy, Brenda, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, first off, the steep grant, do- are we at any risk not forgetting this, uh, given that the- the financial shape that the state's in right now, are we pretty comfortable that we're gonna get these funds?
Uh, well, right now, um, the, uh, grant is capped at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Uh, we would not move forward with any contract, uh, until, uh, we have a signed contract with the state. So, uh, we would not- we would not, um, do any of the work associated with this grant, um, as part of the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, dollars. Now, that being said, it just so happens that, uh, we do have some money, uh, that we had earmarked for, uh, downtown sidewalk, uh, improvements, and so if for some reason this thing ever fell apart or- or whatever, uh, we would use that money, uh, to do the, uh, you know, the worst sections, uh, to repair.
How much money do we have set aside, Bill?
Uh, I believe it was, uh, it's sixty-one thousand dollars that we have in- in the account. Uh, we were all set to, uh, start that in, uh, June, uh, but, uh, there were a couple of reasons why it was delayed, and then the announcement of the grant, so we, uh, just, uh, we just wanted to, uh, wait until the official award.
So is the goal here then, assuming we get this one twenty-eight or what have you, uh, confirmed, is the goal here to spend the one twenty-eight plus the sixty-one and get roughly a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of work done on the, uh, town- on the downtown streetscape?
Yes.
Okay. Could you- can you talk, just give a brief overview of what that work is? I read the document, but just for the record, a little bit about what the work is gonna entail?
Yeah, sure. The, uh, Fairfield Center Pedestrian Improvements Project, uh, consists of the renovation and replacement of the forty-year-old, uh, streetscape, uh, in the, uh, center of town there. Uh, it concentrates, uh, the area near the library, uh, the Post Road, the old Post Road. Uh, it will involve replacing some of the brick, uh, pavers that have been damaged or popped up over the years, uh, constructing, uh, new handicap ramps where, uh, needed, and then, uh, we would, uh, also, um, fix the, uh, sidewalk along the old, uh, Post Road, uh, as well, leading up to that. Um, so that's- that's the area. It's pretty much from the, uh, uh, transit stop, uh, near Sherman Green, uh, and, uh, it will go, uh, towards the, uh, Brick Walk, uh, in, um, in the Fairfield Center.
Now, uh, over- over the period of time I've been here as well as on the Board of Finance, I've gotten questions over how these things get prioritized, because these steep grants, if you wanted to use this, for example, up on Black Rock Turnpike, now I know there's a traffic study going there, or down in Southport Center, you could've directed the application towards that. Can you tell me a little bit about how you prioritize, uh, where these funds go?
Uh, yes, uh, we usually have like a sidewalk matrix, uh, that we can go by, uh, or for projects, uh, we, um, we do have, it's not a priority one, two, three, not that exact, but it's definitely, you know, we have our high priority projects, medium priority, and- and lower priority. So we, uh, usually will pick one from the higher priority, uh, project, and on this one is a little bit different. In the past, some of the steep grants we applied for, uh, uh, were up to half a million dollars, and like you alluded to before, the, uh, state and its, uh, financial, uh, condition right now had limited the, uh, applications to just one, and they were all capped a- at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars. So we're only talking small projects. Another condition, 'cause we actually had, uh, four or five, you know, potential ones that we were looking at, and, um, uh, the other criteria was they had to be, uh, just about shovel-ready, or be, um, uh, uh, the finish to design in less than a month. So, you know, we were looking at, I'll give you an example of the, uh, I think there was a project at the, uh, Senior Center, maybe the kitchen, if I recall, and we were thinking of maybe that as a possibility, or- or some other ones, but they weren't quite, uh, ready, uh, in terms of the design, because the state's trying to fact tr- um, fast-track this, where, uh, they're giving the towns only thirty days, uh, once the announcement, to get all the, you know, resolutions and all the approvals and signed documents involved, and then, uh, they want us to, uh, spend the money as soon as possible. So, uh, I had talked- I had talked to town officials about it, and this is how we determined that this was the best priority.
Bill, when you- when you say things are prioritized, you know, I- and I understand not exactly one, two, three, but in buckets of highest, medium, low, uh, without going into ad nauseam detail, tell me a little bit about that prioritization. Is it safety concern, number of accidents, police commission? What tells you that this particular area was a higher priority than something in Southport?
Uh, well, the- one of the things that we, as I said, with the matrix, it's always, is it near a point of interest or, uh, you know, high pedestrian area, um, uh, the number of pedestrians or uses. Uh, sometimes it's based on the number of complaints that we've, uh, gotten. Uh, is it near a school, or, uh, as I was going to say, uh, the point of interest, a school, the downtown, the train station, a beach, uh, things like that. And then sometimes it also is- involves the ease of construction. Um, obviously if it's a project that involves, say, a large rock cut, uh, and- or we need to get easements, uh, and- and obviously that's gonna get pushed a little bit further back, because that's gonna involve a lot more work.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we're- that we're- that there's a fairness going on here, we're not, uh, and again, I support this, and I know the downtown certainly needs it, but I just wanna make sure that we're looking all over town and not, um, just in one particular area. That's- that's really what I'm trying to get to. And it'd be good for the public to know how that's- how that's put together, particularly our- our commercial public that screams for some of these things.
Well, if you don't mind, Tom, because, uh, the Board of Selectmen will, uh, mostly, certainly the Board of Finance will get involved with our- our waterfall charts and- and things like that, but-
Yeah.
We have some, uh, grants in the ho- in the hopper, so to speak, uh, to continue the, uh, King's Highway Pedestrian, uh, Improvement Phase Three, you know, which takes us from Villa Avenue and goes eastward. Um, we have the Southport Connectivity, uh, Grant in Southport, uh, along, uh, from Hulse Highway to, uh, King's Highway West, uh, that area there, uh, that one, uh, is being designed, and we'll probably have our public informational meeting sometime in September or October, uh, regarding that project. Uh, you mentioned the study on Black Rock Turnpike, uh, we have a grant, uh, application, uh, that has been submitted to, uh, MetroCog, uh, it was approved by that group, and now we're moving forward, uh, with the application to the state. So we do try to, uh, spread it out based on priority, and also based on, you know, region sometimes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate how you, uh, put- you put into it. I just wanna make sure that gets out there in the public domain a little bit, so thank you.
Mhm.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, this is helpful, thank you, Bill.
So, um, (cough) I just wanna say that, uh, Bill does a lot of good work, and there's a lot of moving parts in different areas of the town, and he's very good at jumping on top of grants, um, and making sure they fit into the appropriate thing, and he- we have so many different needs, but obviously, um, he's very good at this, has been doing it a very long time. And, um, I'm looking forward to getting this money, it'll be very helpful, um, to improving our community. So we have a motion-
Hey, there, I said, sorry, I think the first elect woman just called you old Bill. You've been doing this a very, very long.
Either that or experienced, yeah, one of the-
There we go, experienced. There you go. All right, we have a motion, uh, already on the table, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Item (cough), excuse me, item number seven, Affordable Housing Committee requires RTM approval and a report from the Town Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission, to hear and consider an act on the following resolution as recommended by the Affordable Housing Committee, whereas the town of Fairfield wishes to exercise its option to purchase three fifty Quincy Street from Lisa Headley for the sum of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, as more particularly set forth in the real estate sales agreement between said parties, and whereas funds for the purchase of said property may be taken from the Housing Trust Fund as approved by the Affordable Housing Committee at its meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty, and now therefore be it resolved that Brenda Cupchik, first elect woman, be and hereby is authorized to enter into and sign contracts and expend such monies on behalf of the town of Fairfield for the purposes of purchasing said property in accordance with the above and attached agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Seconded.
Okay, and we have, uh, Mark Barnhart on the call, and select, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Town Attorney Baldwin, who, uh, we've been working on this for, uh, quite- quite a- quite a while now, but, um, I'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, can I share a little bit, I- I read the documents that, um, accompanied this, and quite frankly, I didn't, I was having trouble following this story, 'cause it got into the naval, uh, purchase that happened some time ago, then it got into some flooding issues, and- and I'm really not sure how this all fits together, so if somebody could step through that, I would appreciate that.
I- I can, Tom. Uh, this is Mark Barnhart, um, so, uh, as, uh-
Hey, Mark.
As- as was indicated in the, uh, in the report, this was part of the former Navy housing site, which was, uh, purchased by the town and subdivided into individual building lots subject to restrictive covenants, uh, maintaining that as affordable hu- homeownership opportunities, uh, for persons of low to mo- modern income. Um, so this is one of the lots, the town, when it- when it sold the property, did, uh, retain a right of first refusal to repurchase the property. Um, this is largely, the intent here is- is really to preserve these units long-term, that there is concern, given, uh, the flooding that occurred, uh, with, uh, with Storm Sandy in two thousand twelve, and rising flood insurance premiums, that, uh, that- that continued paths may be unsustainable, uh, to, in order to make sure that these do remain affordable to persons within those income categories. Um, you know, uh, I think what we're looking to as well is whether there's an opportunity to perhaps create additional housing units here, uh, through a redevelopment plan. So this would be the initial- initial step, the in- the idea, the intent would be to, uh, purchase additional properties contiguous to this lot, um, working with willing, uh, sellers, aggregate those parcels, um, uh, and then redevelop the site, uh, which would entail, uh, demolishing the existing units which were built back in the nineteen fifties that are not the most energy efficient, and obviously, uh, they were built slab-on-grade at, uh, at flood- at elevation, uh, nine point six, and the flood elevation in that area is now eleven. Uh, so the idea would be to construct new units, uh, taking advantage of the latest in, um, energy efficiency and- and building codes and the like, and also to address, uh, the base flood elevation, raising the units to the required, uh, flood elevation. And keep them as affordable units, uh, but also look for the opportunity to add additional units, uh, within that- within that development. Uh, so that's- that's the overall intent, um, I hope that answered your question.
I do have follow-ups, but I'll wait for my colleagues, in case there's any.
I was curious if there has been any, um, public weigh-in on this. Sounds fine to me, and thank you for clarifying Mr. Flynn's question with my exact one, but I am curious if the public has weighed in, and if there's been any other-
We're not quite at the- at the point yet of, um, of, uh, developing a redevelopment plan. We have met, um, previously, uh, with the homeowners in that area, and continue to have dialogue with- with those individuals. Uh, again, the intent is to work with, uh, with willing sellers, um, and then aggregate the parcels and allow for redevelopment. That would be subject to, uh, planning and zoning approval. We'd have to go through a site plan application for that, so there would be opportunity for the public to- to comment on that.
So somebody with, uh-
Does somebody have a helicopter in their room?
I don't know where that interference is coming from.
How is that?
It sounds like a motorcycle.
It's gone now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nancy did that, or you?
I hope- I hope you heard that, Nancy.
I- I- I most- I have- I heard, I mostly heard it. At the end I didn't, but-
And I- and I guess the other- the other thing I should mention is, um, you know, we did go through a similar process a few years back, we were working with a nonprofit housing developer and- and, uh, collection of homeowners. Uh, we were not able to secure financing for the project, um, you know, subsequent to that effort, we did create a Housing Trust Fund, uh, one of the thoughts at that time was that we might potentially use that, uh, to at least start the process of acquiring lots here and doing a redevelopment of the site. Uh, there is the possibility that, you know, we- we're not able to do that in a timely fashion, or not able to, uh, put together a financing plan that makes sense for all parties, and so the exit strategy here, if we're not able to do that for whatever reason, uh, the intent would be then to, uh, to sell it, uh, with the existing restrictive covenants in place, uh, and I- I- I'm, uh, reasonably confident that we will be able to sell it for the- the purchase price of the property. It's a- it's a nice, nice piece of property, it's a well-maintained home, um, it is a duplex, uh, legally conforming duplex building lot, uh, so there is that, but again, the existing covenants, uh, in terms of homeowner, um, occupancy and uses for a single-family residence, for the sake.
And I guess-
So, Mark, this is Tom, go ahead.
I- I was just trying to answer the same question. The same question would apply just in terms of conservation, or any, like, other red flags. I see you have a- a plan B in case you had to sell it, but I'm curious. I'm just looking for what potential-
Yeah, there is- there is no, uh, there are no inland wetlands on the site, um, it is in a- in a- in a flood zone, an AE flood zone, uh, so, you know, that would be part of the review, uh, that the Planning and Zoning Commission would need to do. Uh, we went through a very similar process, obviously, when we acquired the site and, uh, subdivided the- the property. Um, so we're- we're familiar with that, but, uh, there isn't- there isn't a need for, um, inland wetlands or a conservation review, uh, and approval.
So, so, Mark, uh, go ahead, Nancy, I'm sorry.
I just was saying, thank you, I'm set.
Can I just jump in for a second, um, so, um, Nancy, this might be, you know, before you were involved in town, um, when Tensley, with the first selectman, they- we acquired this property through the Navy, um, and, uh, it's been deemed affordable the entire time, so it's got restrictions on it. And part of the, um, process, when I first came in, was tried to make some moves to increase our affordable housing stock in town on our own, um, obviously due to the eight dash thirty G developments, and to make a more aggressive push toward that goal. So when this opportunity came up, um, Mark thought this was a good opportunity for us to get that ball rolling, and we've been- have met many times discussing this issue on various levels, so this is part of that whole overall vision and goal in mind to do that, just that. So, um, that's part of the re-
Yeah, I was on the RTM, I was on the RTM when we- we voted to for that, um, for the- the fund, but, and I'm all for it. I just wanted to make sure there weren't going to be any, I was looking for potential naysayers, but it sounds like, you know, you're- you're dotting those i's, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, as I sit in, I look at it, I, um, number one, I just got this, I guess this went out on Friday, so I- I haven't had a chance to review it, so I- I'd like to know what the timeliness of this is, number one. On number two, if we were- weren't to jump in and just allow this to sell- Um, number two, if we were, want to jump in and just allow this to sell in a, in a purely private transaction, those restrictions would, would stay in place, or no, Mark?
They would stay in place, uh, so, uh, we're going through that currently with another unit in the development. Um, if, if somebody wants to, uh, to put the property on the market, they need to, uh, come to us to, um, calculate what the maximum resale value would be under the formula price and, and the restrictive covenant, and then we would have to certify the income eligibility of perf- prospective buyer. And, and then at that time, if, if there was, if there was a, an op-, you know, if there was an offer being made, the town does have, again, that limited option to exercise its right to repurchase. In this case, we went directly to this individual once, uh, she indicated that, uh, she was intent on relocating to Florida. This was a site that we had looked at previously as part of a aggregation of parcels to do a redevelopment, a limited redevelopment, it's in the back corner of the site. We, we already talked to a number of the other abutters, uh, there, um, so it, it, it seemed like an opportunity to revisit this.
What does that mean, though, that, that it say, um, to redevelop it, and what does that commit the town to do? I'm just trying to get the overall plan here, because it sounds like this two hundred ninety five thousand is, is a down payment, and there could be a lot more parcels around there that you want to buy, and then I'm not sure how this plays out, and other than it, and I'm not saying this is a bad thing, other than it preserving affordable housing for the town, which is a good thing, what, what else does it do? In other words, why don't we, why are we jumping in here and not letting the private market take care of this, considering with the restrictions, it has to stay affordable housing anyway? See what I'm saying?
I, I hear what you're saying, I, I thought I explained that already, and I'll, I'll try again. But, uh, there's an opportunity here, obviously, to not only preserve affordable housing, there are significant risk factors associated with the property, given, uh, the flooding, uh, situation that occurred.
I understand that.
And rising insurance premiums, that undermine the, uh, the long-term affordability of this site and the capacity of whether or not this will con- continue to be affordable housing. Um, second, secondly, I think there's an opportunity to actually increase the number of affordable units here. So you're correct in that this is a first step. We would have to come back to you for acquisition of additional parcels and, and to actually show you a financing plan for the overall, uh, site redevelopment, should it come to that. Um, but I think, you know, initially, we thought this was an opportunity to at least preserve our options, uh, and flexibility going forward, and landbank, uh, the site, um, and give us an opportunity, a window of, of opportunity in which to, to kind of put the, put the rest of the program together. It, it has to start somewhere, so that's, that's the idea.
Right, but I, and I get that, what I'm kind of hearing, though, is that nobody else wants to buy this to develop it for, for, um, low-income housing, or affordable housing, sorry, not low-income housing, affordable housing, uh, because it's too expensive to do so. So the town is going to buy it, and then we're going to try to strap together other parcels, and what, then have a developer come in and try to redevelop it for affordable housing for that same area? But, and we think because of that, and maybe because of the density, um, that you're going to be able to add more, more affordable housing there, that maybe we'll get over the economic challenges of doing that?
Uh, not.
That's kind of what it's doing?
Not exactly, I, I didn't say that it was too expensive. Uh, the formula price is the price that we're proposing to purchase it for, is within the formula price for the property. Uh, the maximum resale is, is three oh five. I, I do believe that if we were to put it out in the market, uh, there may be somebody that would be willing to, uh, pay that and also meet the affordability restrictions. My concern is long term. This has been something that the Affordable Housing Committee has been wrestling with for many years now in conversations with the homeowners in Parkview Commons. The concern is that rising flood insurance premiums do have a debilitating and corrosive, corrosive effect in terms of the affordability of this. It may not be tomorrow, it may not be next year, but it's, you know, decades from now. If we are concerned about keeping this affordable for the long haul, I think we have to correct some of this structural issues here as relates to the flooding. And that means elevating units, there's no financial incentive, nor can these individuals finance that themselves. There are no grant funds available to do that. So what we're looking at is ways in which we might be able to work with the existing homeowners there, elevate these structures, make sure that they're, uh, more modern and energy efficient, and, and preserve them long term. If that, if in doing that, there's an opportunity to add additional units, we would want to do that as well.
Okay, and what I thought I had heard of it, and I understand that, but what I thought I had heard of, what it, what did the affordability, was that you actually had a developer that came in, looked at this, couldn't get the financing done for it, right? Which led me to believe that the financing didn't work in order to elevate this thing, as you're talking about, and then keep it as affordable housing, so that they walked away. And now we're saying, well, the town will buy it, and we'll try to do a, a similar thing. I presume working with another developer. And the only way you're going to get that
Yeah.
is if you do work on the density of affordable housing. That's what I'm trying to get to, is I don't understand how the economics.
Yeah, I, I'm very clear from Tom. Yeah, so, Tom, the issue was, uh, not so much that the deal didn't pencil out, it was the fact that it relied upon, um, sources of financing through the state or federal government that just weren't available. Uh, and so there was a, a period of time where the developer had, and a, a window of opportunity to do this, wasn't able to actually secure, uh, financing that way, and so that's when things went south. Uh, so there is still interest to do this, I, I agree, we're looking at ways in which we can finance it. Uh, what I'm asking for now is an opportunity to purchase this unit, essentially giving a site control so that we can take that step, and then try to put a package together that we come back to you with that makes sense.
Well, yeah, and, and what I would propose to you, just from my own perspective, is, again, I saw this on Friday, I, I couldn't get out there this weekend, I, I think we have a meeting in two weeks. I, I would love to be able to just visit the property, to see what's going on out there, to understand this a little bit better, and then vote on it in, in a couple of weeks. I don't know whether that blows that up, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to understand the, the potential here a little bit more, that's all.
I, I think our initial plan was to, to close in October, and that was based on the seller's wishes, um, and so that's why the timing is such.
So, the, the bottom line is that this, we've worked on this for quite a, quite a while now, and there is a long-term plan that we'd like to, uh, eventually put together and bring back to the boards to increase the amount of affordable housing and to reach the goal. And that has been something, um, we talked about, um, before we were elected, and, and now is a not real opportunity to actually start doing that. So this is really important, and I really would not like us to postpone the vote.
So I totally agree and support, uh, Brenda, this project and process, and agree that we all talk about the importance of affordable housing, and, and here's an opportunity, and, and it's an opportunity for us as a town to shape the kind of housing, um, that, that is here. Um, if it doesn't blow it up, because I've been in that situation, Tom, if it doesn't blow it up and you feel you need to, and I believe our meeting is next week, um, if it doesn't blow it up, I am supportive of that, but with a strong, you know, I absolutely a hundred percent support this, but also just understand if you need the week, and I would support that. But I would have to make sure that it's not in fact going to have any delay on what ultimately we do, if that makes sense.
It does make very good sense, and thank you, Nancy. Uh, Mr. Barnhart, can you answer that comment?
Well, Attorney Baldwin's also on the line, too, um, who's been working on this.
Got it. Hello, Mr. Baldwin, yeah? Hello?
Jim, are you on the line? Jim?
(laugh) Maybe not.
Uh, in terms of timing.
He said he got discon- he just texted me, he got disconnected, I guess he's going to try to call back on, um.
Got it.
Okay, he's calling back now.
Great, and by the way.
Um, so obviously, you know, um, you know, just to, just to be clear, I'm, I mean, I, I know we have, I didn't, I just looked, I didn't realize we had a meeting next week. But anytime, you know, when you guys get the agenda, I'm available to take phone calls, uh, on the weekends, as is Attorney Baldwin, uh, so that we can move forward with issues, um, when they are on the agenda. So please, uh, feel free to always call myself or, or Attorney Baldwin on any item that you, um, have more additional questions on, so that we can, uh, vote on items that are on the agenda.
Good.
And he should be trying to, is he back on?
Yeah, I'm ba- I'm back on, I apologize, I, I am hitting unmute, I, I hit my speakerphone and disconnected. Uh, I was just going to, to the timing of this, uh, I think if there is a meeting next week, it's possible, but it's very important that this get before the, uh, the RTM for their next meeting. Uh, I think that the September meeting, am I right, was canceled, and it's going to be October fifth, a special meeting?
Correct.
I, I've got to double check that, because they had two meetings scheduled in September, and I thought they just canceled one of them.
Okay.
And was incorporating, um.
Well, I, I think it's.
Yeah, our, our, our original int- our original intent was to, uh, to get to the RTM, yeah, for the September meeting, uh, to honor the seller's wishes to close on or about October first. Uh, we're not able to do that, because from what I understand, checking with the town clerk, that meeting is actually October fifth, so we've advised the attorney for the seller that we would not, uh, be able to meet, uh, the October first closing date, but obviously time is of the essence for them, to some extent.
Right.
So our, so our week delay here has no bearing on the RTM then, because that's an October fifth date anyway? Is that a fair comment I'm asking?
I, I would just want to confirm that that's the case, that's my understanding, Tom. I think that, if that's the case, it's correct.
That is, yeah.
Can we, someone confirm that meeting?
If, unless something has changed, uh, today, I, I checked with the town clerk and was indicated, was told that the, uh, the RTM, uh, committee meetings will be the twenty ninth of September, and the regular meeting would be October fifth, or a special meeting would be October fifth.
Right, and, and, uh, and the committee, the committees need this before them in time. Um, I think there's just enough time to make that happen, um.
Right, and we do have the, we do have, uh, Nancy is correct, our meeting is next week, Monday the twenty first. So if we vote on it next Monday, the whole package can go to the RTM well before their committee meetings and get them on the agenda for October fifth. Is that fair?
So, Tom, do you want to make a, a motion, should, I mean, is, do we?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I will, I just wanted to make sure that I have the understanding correct. And as long as I have the understanding correct, I'll definitely, uh, make that motion. And Mark, I would, uh, love to go tour that property with you, if that's possible, and I can make myself available this week to do it.
Well, you, you're not going to get access to the interior, are you, or are you just driving by?
No, I'm not asking for that, I just want to look and see the neighborhood and that kind of stuff, I just haven't had the opportunity.
Sure.
Great, so I'm looking at their meetings, um, and their meeting, at the, their regular meeting was, uh, September twenty ninth is their regular meeting. Is, at least was on the town website. And their committee meeting is the twenty first, so it's that evening, if I have that correct.
They moved their committee meeting to twenty ninth, and they're meeting on October fifth.
Okay, so that's been confirmed, okay, perfect. So I'll make a motion to move this item to date certain, which is our September twenty first, uh, meeting, and I promise my colleagues I will, uh, complete my due diligence this week on this end.
I'll, I'll second that. We, I guess, yeah, and just want to make note that I will, it will have my support then, and it has it now.
Yes, and I, and I do want to make comment that I do support the initiative, Brenda's absolutely right, or the first select woman's absolutely right. Affordable housing and maintaining this for the town, and expanding it in an appropriate way, is, uh, very important. I just want to make sure I understand the implication of committing two hundred ninety five thousand dollars on this specific item, and what that means longer term, uh, for financial commitment from the town to this area in order to get our money back, uh, and to make sure we achieve the goals.
Just to be clear, uh, Tom, though, this is an affordable housing project, so we wouldn't be getting, it's not an investment property. This is to, uh, increase the stock of our affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Commission reviewed this and used money out of a fund that was specifically designed for this very purpose, and, um, so we wouldn't be getting investment back on this. This is to expand, to start the process of expanding and increasing the town's affordable housing stock.
Yeah, but presumably when they sold this property, that fund would be, uh, that fund would be replenished with the proceeds from the sale of the property, so I understand it doesn't go to the general fund, but it would go back to that fund and replenish it as opposed to extinguish it. And I just want to make sure I understand how it works, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that is the intent, that is correct. That was the condition under which the Affordable Housing Committee unanimously approved the allocation of Housing Trust Fund monies for this purpose, or recommended that to you, was with that intention, so.
Yeah, and Mark, since we're in this conversation, how much, how, what is the funding level of that trust fund right now?
The fund has eight hundred thousand dollars at present, roughly.
Got it, so this, so this is roughly forty percent of that fund or so, give or take?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So we have motion and a second to postpone this item, is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
To a date certain, being the twenty first.
Yes, to date certain, yes. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to oppose, the motion carries two to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number eight, to hear and consider an act upon a charge for the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. So I'll just, um, give a brief overview, um, on June eleventh, we held a community conversation via Zoom with local elected officials to discuss racial injustice and equity, largely in response to the death of George Floyd by Minnesota police and the protests and riots which followed. During the forum, I announced I would be establishing a task force in the town of Fairfield, and that I would be appointing Select Woman Nancy Lefkowitz as one of its co-chairs. I am proud today to present a mission statement for the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force we are establishing in the town of Fairfield, to be approved and voted on by the Board of Selectmen. Many months of work have gone into this charge so that we can better study existing town policies and procedures. The goal is to enhance and improve Fairfield's commitment to systematically fair and equal treatment of all town residents, businesses, workers, visitors, regardless of their race. We are accepting, we have been accepting questionnaires from residents, um, who wish to serve on the eleven-member body, and we have been reviewing them, um, as they come in, and residents who still wish to. And residents who still wish to apply can do so at www.fairfieldct.org/boardinterestform. The members, uh, will be selected by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and will represent the two major political parties, as well as unaffiliated and independent residents. I will now turn it over to Selectman Lefkowitz for her comments. But I just wanna take a moment to thank you, Nancy, very much for all your hard work that you have put in to help establish this task force and for your willingness to serve on it. And I also want to thank, uh, Town Attorney Baldwin for the amount of time and effort he has also put in in assisting in this, um, in this charge. And so I'll hand it over to Nancy.
Well, thank you so much, uh, Madam First Select Woman, and thanks right back to you for your openness and your willingness and your declaration that this work, uh, is important and identifying the need for a Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. Um, as you mentioned, a lot of hours and a lot of effort have gone into carefully crafting language. And for that, I too wanna thank Attorney Baldwin, uh, for working so closely with me and with, um, someone who, as the presumptive co-chair, I've been working closely to, um, to reach out to invested stakeholders, to members of the black and brown community here in town, to the RTC and the DTC and, um, Wake Men and the various, uh, houses of worship, um, to the schools, to Equity Voices and the Equity Coalitions at the high schools. And I wanna thank the students for their input. But really, um, so many thanks, and it's really, I don't even have words. It's very moving to me that Gina Lublow, who is a resident of the town and on this call, and I hope the presumptive, uh, co-chair of this task force, um, and I hope, uh, we will get to, to vote for her, uh, co-chairpersonship at a, at a meeting next week, I hope. Um, but to thank Gina from the bottom of my heart for her hard work, her thoughtful input, um, for, for really making sure that every word that is in that mission statement resonates. Um, we've had an incredible experience, uh, speaking to potential applicants and just town residents, people who are interested in doing this work. And what is so heartening is how many people, Democrats, Republicans, unaffiliated voters, who, um, are really invested in this work and are invested in the, not only equal treatment, but the, the equality and equity of treatment of all residents here, um, and justice for all residents. And it's a, it's a huge Herculean task, but it's, uh, it's super hopeful, given, um, how many people have thrown their hat in the ring so far. And I wanna echo, uh, the First Select Woman's, uh, sentiment here that if there are other people that are interested, there is room at the table for literally anyone that wants to be involved. Um, we are building the rocket as we're flying on it, so to speak. And I look forward to the, the long-term ongoing work of this important task force. So, um, I do believe that Gina Lublow is on the line, and I would love her to, to, if she has anything to add, or just even to say hello and so that we have the opportunity to say thank you to her, if she's here.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, I've had a wonderful experience working with you to craft the mission statement. And, um, I've had a lot of amazing conversations with Fairfield residents of, um, and it's been a really, uh, excellent show of bipartisan commitment. Uh, we've spoken with people from all political backgrounds. And, um, I hope that together we can, with all voices represented at the table, um, move forward in a way that, uh, helps Fairfield, um, just solidify the commitment to equity that, uh, First Select Woman, Kupchik, spoke of. So thank you for allowing me to, um, participate in the process.
Thank you, Gina. Any comments, Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, I would. I was waiting to see if the conversation was done there. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the First Select Woman for, um, putting this initiative together. Uh, Nancy, thanks for all the hard work, um, and agreeing to take on the task, um, as well as your colleagues that will serve on the commission with you. Mr. Baldwin, uh, I know that I've spoken with you several times on the charge for the committee, and I'd like to thank you for your, uh, your work on putting this all together. I know it wasn't an easy, easy task to get everything down and pen to paper. I'm very hopeful for this committee that'll come back with, um, some solid recommendations that are actionable, uh, to, to address this, uh, very important topic. I'm also cognizant of the fact that right now, uh, the committee's focusing, uh, on racial, uh, justice, um, and, and balance and equity, and I think that's very important. I would like to say that, um, I think moving forward long-term, it's very important that we make sure that, uh, this doesn't just, uh, address race, but goes to, um, sexual orientation, uh, other, um, and other classes of individuals, whether it's, um, our senior citizens or, um, or the like. I think it's just justice for all as opposed to just looking at, at one specific area or group. And it's my hope that the town continues, uh, to have policies and improves policies to make sure that everybody is equally represented, um, from all walks of life and all areas of our community. I think that's very important, and I think that's, quite frankly, what we've always strived for. Um, in business, you always put together, uh, reviews and processes to make sure that your goals are adapted and met. And I'm hopeful that this will just be part of that, uh, to make sure that we continue to strive as a community for all our residents. So thank you very much.
Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. Nancy, yay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can I, this is Attorney Baldwin. Can I just add one comment?
Sure.
Even though you've taken the vote on it. Just a reminder to everybody, anyone who's listening and, and interested in participating in this process. It's not just limited to the task force, of course. This is gonna be a, uh, a governmental public body that's gonna be subject to meeting rules, FOI rules, postings, and, and the like. So, um, there's ample opportunity for, uh, the citizenry to, um, be involved and attend meetings and the like.
Good point. Thank you for sharing that.
And in fact, this will only work if we have engaged citizenry who is committed to the ideals put forth, not just in the mission statement, but of this idea that injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. So I think very much to the point, Attorney Baldwin, we must have engaged citizens for this to be ongoing, effective, and impactful.
Well said. Okay, if we, if you don't have any other comments, I'm gonna move on to item number nine. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of twenty six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight, twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second, and I've got a comment on this.
Okay.
All right. So I will be abstaining from this vote because, believe it or not, my wife and I are on this list this time. And it's kind of a cautionary tale. Uh, we found out, in taking advantage of these great interest rates now available, that we had been overcharged by the town, uh, due to a, an error in the square footage of my house. Now, it hadn't been caught since before we owned the residence because it was consistent, year over year after year. And it was only when going through a refinancing process that it became apparent that the square footage, uh, for the second floor was actually incorrect. And so it was brought to our attention. We went to the town. We understood what we can, um, you know, claim back as an error. Uh, I will say, the, the assessor's office was fantastic to deal with during this process. They, they really were. Kudos to them. Um, but it is a cautionary tale that people should look diligently in all their, all their, um, assessments. Um, because, again, I look at mine, but the fact that it was consistent square footage for all these years, um, duped me for a period of time. So there you go.
Okay. Um, any other, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And one abstention. The motion carries. Okay. Item number ten, to hear and consider and act upon any other visits that shall properly come before this meeting. And, uh, I'm gonna provide, um, a quick update on, um, well, um, I'll go right to the environmental stuff, um, 'cause I know there's been some questions on that. Um, and it's, most of this has been what I put in my newsletter, uh, in COVID, all of that. But, uh, just a quick update, environmental, the contamination. So while this process is taking way longer than, uh, I expected, um, that, you know, we, I kind of back and forth with DEP, uh, it's kinda moving the goalpost a bit, um, and changes have been frustrating, to say the least. Um, but just so you know, we are, I am, in constant contact with our environmental attorney, Brian Carey and Tom Bremer is, are also, as well as Attorney Baldwin. And we, um, we are putting together to, I think we may have actually finished, right, Tom? Um, the last piece to, uh, submit with, uh, Attorney Miller, right? To DEP on the consent order. Um, with respect to the auxiliary sites, the original plan was to have all this wrapped up 'cause we're working pretty diligently on this, uh, bef, right at the beginning of summer with the hope of having those sites cleaned up before school started. And because they changed things around and, uh, the consent order changed things for us, uh, where we were going, we weren't able to do that. Um, just one other quick update on the, so some of the consent order parameters. Um, requ, the, the LEP, Ty and Bond, who's been working on this for us, felt they needed to do some additional samplings after looking at the consent order, uh, boundaries or, uh, information that they wanted. That sites that were already cleared, they wanted to go back for their own edification and do additional testings that they hadn't originally done and that were not required, but just to be completely safe as far as the consent order goes. So they are started, I believe they're started today, uh, just doing some sampling of, of the sites, additional samplings to make sure that, you know, the DEP doesn't say, oh, you didn't do this, even though we didn't require it. Um, uh, let's see, what else? The wastewater treatment, which kinda came up a couple of weeks ago, um, that I put out. Um, the town, obviously, you know, we spent seven million dollars on this project. The town's LEP identified PCBs in certain project area soil samples and were determined from historical contamination. Uh, there is no evidence that this contamination is, was connected or is connected to the fill pile or any of the other sites in town. Uh, the regulators were notified, uh, of the site conditions and since the town's environmental attorney and conservation director have met with DEP and EPA staff several times. The LEP prepared a protocol with input in concurrence from DEP and EPA to investigate, manage, and properly dispose of contaminated soils so the town can continue on with the hardening project. Um, and so basically, how it's been working is as they're working around putting up this hardening, you know, this wall that protects the wastewater treatment facility from flooding, from any flood damage that could potentially hit it. They do tests, and then once it's cleared, then they build, and then they move on, so on and so forth. So that's kinda how we've been working, and, and just to be assured, we are working with both DEP and EPA on that. Um, I did put this in mind... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, if I could just ask a question and just reiterate something, and again, for public edification. Um...
Yes.
You said it, but I think it's worth repeating, that this has nothing to do with contaminants, Julian, the fill piles issue, that this is historic contaminants from decades-long issues. Um, am I correct in asserting that again?
That, that's the belief. And just, that was a former Nike site, um, in town. So there was a lot of material used on that. I mean, really, that whole entire area, uh, was used for different various purposes, and this contamination most likely came from that.
And this came up in the WPTA meeting over the summer.
Right.
People should be reassured that it didn't, everything has been moving forward. I think people were concerned that the public wasn't made aware, but it was sort of like, in the course of projects, this was all, I don't wanna say standard operating procedure, given that it's a contaminant issue, but it, it, that Brian Carey had been working on it. And just because it was made public in the newsletter two weeks ago, it's, it's not to say that work hadn't been done and it had been accounted for. So I just wanted to get back to the public.
Right, and, and, and you, right, you make a good point, Nancy, because, um, because of the situation the town has been in, um, obviously, there's heightened awareness about anything to do with contaminants. But frankly, towns across the state of Connecticut deal with this stuff every single day. Whenever they're doing a project, there's some contaminants that are found. Um, just because, you know, we live in a, a state where there wasn't strict environmental regulations in the, you know, twenties, thirties, forties, and fifties. And this has happened in towns throughout the state of Connecticut. Um, and this is what happens just because we are, have such a heightened awareness due to the past situation with the fill pile. I think you're right. People get a little, you know, obviously, people are on edge about anything to do with contaminants.
And, you know, I don't wanna suggest, nor do I think you are suggesting your comments, that people don't have a right to be concerned. I just, you know, want people to be assured that it, it, you know, this has been, people are dealing with it, and again, just because a couple of weeks ago it was made public in the newsletter, it doesn't mean that people hadn't been working on it. Deal with it, it doesn't mean it was either, it was like nefariously being hidden.
No, no, we're not. Thank you for saying that. No.
Can I, so at this point, as it relates to the former Nike site and the construction work going on there, uh, do we, are we any closer to knowing what it means to the town financially? Or I, I know, after this story broke, I spoke with Mr. Carey and Mr. Bremer, and we were waiting on some additional information, but do we have anything on that yet?
No. Because like I said, it just continues. You know, they build the wall, they sample, they get clearance, then they build another section, and so on and so forth. So it's an ongoing process. Similar to the other, you know, similar to the other, you know, the fill pile and all the rest.
Yeah.
The DEP, you know, we wait and we wait and we wait and we wait and we wait. And when they tell us, you know, yes, you can clean it like this, and here's what we want you to do. And then our LEP comes back and says, yes, this is exactly how much it's gonna be, and this is how long it's gonna take, that's when we'll have an answer. But right now, we do not...
Right. Has the, has the incidence, uh, of finding things and the testing changed over the last couple of weeks, Tom? 'Cause to Brenda's point, or Brenda, uh, because to your point, we sample, we test, we sample, we send it back. Now, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we were seeing a trend, and I just wanna know if that trend is, you know, stayed the same, gotten any better, or gotten any worse, or there's no additional information.
Which, which side are we talking about?
I'm sorry. We're talking about the, where the walls being built, Brenda. The, the...
Oh, the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because my understanding is, we would go, you know, a few hundred feet or whatever, test some more, go another few hundred feet. And what we were, based on the incidents and what we were seeing, the trend, there were issues, but it wasn't horrendous or anything. I just wanna know if, if we've got any additional information based on testing within the last couple of weeks. That, that's really what I'm asking.
No, it's the same. I mean, I think I sent the update two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So it hasn't, nothing's changed. And anytime, there will be something different, um, but it's been, it seems like it's sporadic. You know, like, there's nothing, 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 boom, they hit something, and it's nothing, nothing, nothing.
Right.
So, um, I'm assuming that's the way it'll trend.
Right. So, can I go back to the other comments you made? So, let's, can I go back to the other comments you made just at the beginning of your remarks? On the rest of the testing sites, forgive me, who asked that we go back and do a, additional test, that they wanted to go back and do additional testing of some of those sites?
Ty and Bond.
So Ty and Bond came in and said, "We recommend you guys do additional testing."
Oh, they said, "Due, due to the consent order on all the other sites, they would like to add additional tests so they could feel comfortable with the entire consent order that covers other areas." And basically because they're LEPs and they want to make sure that things that they already signed off on are in concurrence with the new standards from DEP under the consent order.
Right. And as of right now, based on all the work that's been done, um, with Ty and Bond and that, I'm talking the testing work, not the remediation work, have we set aside enough money, do we know, as of right now, to cover that? Or is there gonna be more, uh, more requests coming?
Are you saying for testing? Or for the remediation? We don't have a remediation plan yet.
Totally understand, right.
Because we haven't, not that signed off on yet.
That's right, no, I, you and I are on the same page. I meant just the testing, Bren, not the remediation.
I, I, we may need some more, um, but I don't have that figure or the information yet. Um, I think the testing, that, yeah, the testing they're gonna do, the additional testing on that's not gonna be a huge amount, but I don't know what the total cost of testing is gonna be, all the ongoing testing down to wastewater treatment. Um, but Mr. Carey, I know he's up, I'm sure he's sure he'll probably update the Board of Finance on that sort of thing, 'cause that's their purview, the finance part.
Yep.
I just wish they would, you know, I'm getting frustrated to the point where I asked, um, Attorney Miller, um, if we can't get something going this week, I want to request a meeting and I want to go to Hartford, uh, with him, because I'm, I'm getting pretty, um, aggravated, frankly.
Yeah, I can understand it.
Yep. And so, um, well, I mean, most of the stuff, uh, obviously, uh, the stuff I have, um, that I put in the newsletter really covered it, uh, where we are to date. And, um, I think, oh, and I just wanted to update, um, uh, we, we did, the town did put a bid in, uh, for Giant Steps, um, property, uh, that includes the school Giant Steps. Um, most, most, I, I think, I know both of you know that, um, the Board of Ed was looking for a new place to put the alternative high school due to the fact that the building they're currently in is very, um, old and it has a lot of problems with it, and the Diocese wanted a, a lot of money for it, um, and it wasn't the best location, so they had went on that whole thing and it was, it was in the press and they talked a lot about it. But, they had invited a bunch of us to go to Giant Steps, I, God, it was a month or more ago. And it was, um, the Board of Ed members, um, I think they invited the whole Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure, and I know there were Board of Finances-
They did not.
And so we went and looked, um, at the site and got a tour of the school building, which is very nice, actually, uh, and, and like a perfect fit for it, um, I mean, it has everything, really, maybe some small modifications, but it would work perfectly. So, we, we looked and talked and went back and forth and, uh, I decided, uh, to ask the town attorney to put in a bid, uh, on the property for the town and that the town would, would be in control of the property, but we would, you know, allow use for the alternative high school. And I did speak to the chairman of the Board of Finance at length about this over the last couple of weeks and he agreed, uh, that, um, it would be a good thing for us to do, a smart move for us to make, and in that, you know, we could decide going forward how we would utilize the rest of the property and what ways that would make the most sense for the town. Um, but right now, uh, he agreed that he thought it was a good purchase for the town, um, and so we did enter into that, and Attorney Baldwin was on the phone. Um, so they've accepted our bid, uh, our offer, and so we're gonna be moving forward on that, um, as quickly as possible and obviously we'll be bringing that proposal back to the Board of Selectmen and we'll have to go through all the town bodies as well.
So, um, thank you, Madam Selectwoman, um, just one point of reference, I did not receive an invite for the, uh, for the tour of Giant Steps, just to be clear. So I didn't, I wasn't part of that.
I, I didn't either, for what it's worth.
It was the Board of Ed that invited people, so I'm, I'm not sure who, who were they doing or who they did.
Madam, Madam Select, this is Attorney Baldwin, uh, just to, to-
Yep.
Make sure that everybody is aware of the current, uh, process. Um, uh, the, the parties are still waiting for formal, uh, you know, uh, agreements or acknowledgements that the, that, that the offer, uh, has been accepted. That requires board approval, much like the Board of Selectmen, you know, and the RTM ultimately would need to approve this along with other town bodies. But, but, um, the, for Selectman is correct that, that we have, uh, an understanding in principle, uh, that, uh, the offer, uh, is being, uh, presented to the Board, uh, of Giant Steps and, and, uh, we hope and expect that that will be favorable. Um, the, there are no real, um, other so-called negotiations going on right now other than kind of, uh, proceeding down that formal, uh, approval process.
Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Uh, can I make a comment on a slightly related but slightly unrelated topic based on the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Um, which is to say, and it's mostly by way of reminder, that the Board of Selectmen, uh, is really not involved and although I can only speak for myself here, I am happy to be supportive in any way that I can in terms of the schools and the respect to school process and remote versus distance and, and all the things that people are asking about. Um, it's really not in the purview of the Board of Selectmen and I've been getting a lot of inbound emails and concerns and frustrations about, uh, from parents about their own particular issues. And I just encourage people to reach out to the Board of Ed or to the Fairfield Public Schools directly. Um, our superintendent, Mike Cummings, is very responsive, very receptive, as are the members of the Board of Ed, but it's really not something in my personal purview and, or the Board of Selectmen's purview to, to help or rectify. And again, we can be helpful where we can. And I only say this because I know it's, it's been frustrating for people who have reached out to me for me to then say, you know, this is not really an area where the Board of Selectmen has influence. So, I don't know if that's been your experience, but I just wanted to say for the record that happy to help where I can be helpful and want to be helpful, but, um, it is a separate acting body and, and these times are precarious at best for everybody and anxiety provoking and certainly don't want to add to that, but can't be as helpful as people would like because it's just simply not in the purview of the work that the Board of Selectmen is, um, involved with. Is that fair to say?
What, are you saying the, um, the school itself, moving the schools?
Well, just, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of, um, emails and phone calls from residents, uh, asking for help with the back to-
Oh, oh, okay, are you mean, you mean with the hybrid schooling and all of that?
All of it, any sort of-
Yep.
-school-related questions. And people saying, you know, this, as a Board of Selectmen member, can I help? And again, our nature is to want to be helpful, but it's really not in our purview. And I just want to reiterate that the Board of, uh, the superintendent, the Board of Ed, all very open, receptive, responsive, want to be helpful and that is the best place to go for school-related, uh, questions and concerns.
Absolutely, and, and yes, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I've been very clear with any resident who reaches out and has reached out in the past regarding, um, how the school, uh, district is, um, delivering their education under, uh, COVID. And I very clearly say I have no authority over that and they are the sole authority, just like the superintendent doesn't have authority of, over how I manage the town. And I'm willing to always share, uh, information, uh, from, from residents, parents, most, mostly, with the superintendent, uh, asking for a response. Um, but other than that, um, you're right, it's not within our purview.
It's not, um, I am a parent of, of re- two kids in the public schools, so I have empathy and, and I know it is an anxiety-provoking time, to be sure, um, so I don't-
Absolutely, yeah.
We're not, I, I don't bring this up by way of being dismissive or not wanting to be helpful, but just to be more helpful is to say, you know, the, the source is really the superintendent and, and the Board of Ed.
Absolutely. Any other, uh, comments, uh, before we move to the next item? So, um, uh, Selectman Flynn asked, um, the interim chief fiscal officer to provide, uh, just a cursory update on, uh-
Sorry, can I ask one more, um-
Oh, sure.
...COVID-related question, which had been discussed somewhat, but there were some, um, questions on Facebook in terms of testing the wastewater. And I just, I know that you've talked about it, I just was hoping you could provide just a, sort of, the last word on that in terms of where things are.
So, yes, it was brought to my attention that it exists, which I wasn't even aware of. Um, and I asked, uh, San Clarion, there was a, there was a pilot program that was instituted through the state and they picked specific, uh, towns and they were doing it. I asked him to reach out, that pilot program is not open anymore, so we can't get in it. Um, I asked, um, our water pollution control authority, uh, to look into seeing how much that would cost, um, for the town to do on its own. Um, it is a little, um, it's, it's a little, like I just had someone tell me, I don't know where, what meeting I was in, but that, um, they were doing that at a university and apparently they had a couple of, uh, students in a certain quad where they have each of the sewer lines going separately and they had been testing the wastewater there. And they had students test positive, but they didn't have any positive, um, test samples from that wastewater, so I'm not really sure how accurate that is. Um, but I do have both departments, health and, um, water treatment, uh, control looking into it. And when I have some more information, I'll share it with both of you.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna get a cursory, I'm sorry we went so long already today, but, um, uh, get a, a cursory update, uh, on the status of the town's fiscal year-end of close, uh, from the interim, uh, chief fiscal officer, and I'll hand it over to Caitlin.
Hi guys, hopefully you have, um, I put together just a summary, kind of, of where we are. As you, as you probably know, we're in the midst of our fiscal year-end audit now. Um, going as planned with, um, a couple unknowns that are clearly unique this year due to COVID and reimbursements for COVID-related expenses and the unemployment costs related to COVID as well. So there are some unique, um, var- variables this year, um, due to COVID and there's clearly savings and expenses due to COVID, so it's a little bit more confusing than normal. Um, but on the summary, as you guys can, can see, um, we're in the midst of our audit. The aud- um, auditors have been here a little bit, um, doing a lot remotely. So we've been using portals to send documents back and forth. Um, on the revenue side, there's an approximate two million, um, revenue shortfall this year related to basically the taxes. Um, clearly we had the deferment program. Um, our current year taxes were about one point seven, um, under budget and in addition to, um, the prior year, which we kind of knew about because of the tax sale that was budgeted and then the, um, interest, which kind of corresponds to that. Um, on the other side of the revenue, we had favorability in our investment income that we've been talking about, um, our building revenue, which we've been talking about a lot, our state aid, um, and fire marshal fees were all favorable, offset by park and rec revenue, um, clearly another COVID, uh, fatality. And I did not book the COVID reimbursement as of today. Um, we are waiting on actual award letters to actually do that. But just to give you a feel, it's about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars that we could potentially be getting between FEMA, the corona relief fund from the state and the unemployment, uh, reimbursement through the CARES Act. But these numbers do not include any reimbursement for that piece. Um, on the expense side, uh, we're estimating about a two million favorability. Basically, a lot of it is due to personnel savings, we have COVID savings and offset by COVID expenses and again, the unemployment was a big piece and other operational savings. So when you look at the two together, um, just to summarize, so we have a two million revenue shortfall, which is offset by a two million savings expense, which would then leave the budget contribution surplus of the one point three, approximate one point three million, um, to either fall down to equity or to be transferred somewhere else through the Board of Finance approval process. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
And this is the Board of Ed keeping everything that they're able to keep based on the actions of the Board of Finance, is that a correct statement?
Yes, I have no, um, either favorability or negativity for the Board, uh, for the Board of Ed. So that assumes-
Do we know? Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, so that assumes they come in, um, exactly at their budget. I know there's gonna be discussion tomorrow regarding the non-lapsing account and what they're carrying over on that piece, but my numbers do not include any variance to the Board of Ed for this fiscal year.
And they are not, they aren't articulating that there is any, um, any overage, if anything, there should be a savings there, is that correct?
Um, I have heard between the non-lapsing account and, um, the maximum they can carry over, I believe if there is anything, it's, it's minimal.
Yeah, okay. Do, are they giving you s- any, um, information right now, uh, related to how they're doing this fiscal year knowing that they've got potentially more transportation costs in them and the like because of scheduling changes they've needed to make?
I, I believe that's all gonna be discussed in detail tomorrow night.
Okay. All right, I look forward to hearing that.
Any other questions?
No, Caitlin, thank you, hope you're doing well.
Okay, you too, Nan.
Thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
All right, if we don't have any additional items, um, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, thank you everybody for productive meeting.
Have a good night.
You guys too.
Bye-bye. Bye.